O land of the free by the Caribbean, our manhood be pledged to thy liberty. No tyrants still linger, despots must flee this tranquil haven of democracy. The blood of our souls which swallowed the sun brought freedom from sacred oppression. Run by the might of truth and the grace of God, no longer shall we be heard. The wood arise, ye sons of the Baymen's clan. Put on your armor, clear the land. Drive back the tyrants, let despots flee. Land of the free by the Caribbean. Nature has blessed thee with wealth untold, four mountains and valleys where prairies roll. Our fathers, the baymen, valiant and bold drove back the invaders as heritage hold. From ground grey o'hand of the old saas stood, through coral islands over blue lagoot. Keep watch with the angels, the stars and moon, for freedom comes tomorrow's loot. Arise, ye sons of the Baymen's clan. Put on your armor, clear the land. Drive back the tyrants, let despots flee. Land of the free by the Caribbean.
Almighty and eternal God, who through Jesus Christ has revealed your glory to all nations, please protect and preserve Belize, our beloved country. God of might, wisdom and justice, please assist our Belizean government and people with your Holy Spirit of counsel and fortitude. Let the light of your divine wisdom direct their plans and endeavors, so that with your help, we may attain our just objectives. With your guidance, may all our endeavors tend to peace, social justice, liberty, national happiness, the increase of industry, sobriety and useful knowledge. We pray, O God of mercy, for all of us, that we may be blessed in the knowledge and sanctified in the observance of your most holy law, that we may be preserved in union and in that peace which the world itself cannot give. And after enjoying the blessings of this life, please admit us, dear Lord, to that eternal reward that you have prepared for those who love you. Amen.
Greetings, residents of Belmopan. It has been five months since this city council has taken office. Allow me to introduce to you my counselors. We have deputy mayor Guadalupe Chicas, counselors Darren Swayze, Sonicall, Pauline Sobirani Stillett, Nikki Augustine and Hope Amadi. Upon entering City Hall, my team and I quickly found out that several things had gone wrong. Systems were broken, monies were unaccounted for, and staff morale was at an all-time low. There were ghost workers, several people doing nothing to very little. Fuel orders could have been signed by multiple persons, leading to abuse. The council was indebted by millions of dollars. There were several irregularities in land transaction, in public buffer areas and green spaces. If I were to give a figure, it will be inaccurate, because there came a point when we had to stop spending our time and resources finding out more of the same. Therefore, the council took a decision in first to bear the pain. While we cannot forget the past, it is our duty to take hard decisions to rectify what went wrong. There was a need for a re-engineered City Hall. This is necessary to offer the highest quality services with extremely meager resources. There was also the need to ensure a qualified body of leaders and workers at City Hall. To date, we have four heads of departments that respond to the council and the operations at City Hall. I am happy to present these four heads of departments to you, and they are Mr. Melvin Edenogé, he is our Director of Finance, Ms. Glenys Williams, our Human Resource Administrator, Mr. John B. Wade, he is our Director of Sanitation Events and Public Relations, and our City Administrator, Dr. Ludwig Palacio. This team has demonstrated efficiency, leadership and honesty. They have worked long hours, shown dedication and sacrifice, as together we rise from indebtedness to our ultimate goal, which is financial sustainability. You must have seen from time to time when the council was simply unable to make timely payments, and this continues to be a reality, something that we face monthly. For this, I wholeheartedly apologize and commend the workers on board who are a part of this sacrifice. No council can do it alone. This one is no different. We need you, the residents, and the good citizens of Belmopan to work with us, to cooperate, to pay your taxes timely, to create and share opportunities for those in need. Work with the council to achieve the success that we all want. I would like to highlight people of goodwill that have contributed time and resources that have proven beneficial to this city council. Number one person is our era representative, Honorable Oscar Robert Mira, who gives of his time whenever he is called upon, for that we say thank you, our era representative. Along with those is Dr. Sayo Ajiboye, who graciously donated five brand-new desktop computers, and he brought along 12 experts who visited City Hall to share their wealth of knowledge and experience. We wasted no time and we quickly established what we call BASL, which means Belmopan African Strategic Innovative Network. Sitco has been diligent in securing training courses in different skills such as sewing under the leadership of a very active counselor, Pauline Stillett, who secured spaces for several young people. We also, we are about to embark on an urban gardening and seedbed making. These activities are in process, thanks to the collaboration with the Embassy of Venezuela and the Ministry of Agriculture and Health for Progress. Initiatives like these will be aggressively pursued. The young people of Belmopan need training and expertise to enable them to contribute and receive benefits from the fast-growing municipality in Belize and to generate revenues for the city. I must commend my counselors and congratulate them for the highest attendance at caucus meetings. I salute them over and over again. Sitco supported an idea from councilman Nikki Augustine, so on May 29th, a successful night market was held, much to the delight of the residents of Belmopan. Because of the COVID pandemic, we have been able to continue such an event at this time. I am happy to announce that we have strong collaboration with the following departments: Forestry Department, Belmopan Police Formation, Fire Department, Department of Environment, Health, Labor, of course, the Ministry of Education and Foreign Affairs. We are at a point now whereby we need to redefine the city of Belmopan. As your mayor, it is my duty to share some insights with you. We are aware of the many issues affecting the city, some of which include old equipment, infrastructure breakdowns such as streets, walkways. We are constantly looking at solutions. So, we are looking closely at all these deteriorated streets, the walkways, and of course, along with the Reconstruction and Development Corporation. I can reassure you, the Belmopan residents, that we will be looking closely at providing you with access to better roads, better streets and better walkways. This I promise you. In closing, allow me to share with you that we've completed our strategic plan and we'll be more than happy to share our plan with all the residents of Belmopan. In redefining Belmopan, we're looking at Belmopan as a tourism hub and declaring it officially the university city, whereby we'll be promoting the best study abroad and service learning to the many universities who we are busy seeking collaboration and finalizing MOUs with them. Finally, between our honorable Oscar Mira and ourselves, we are launching the biggest scholarship program in the entire country of Belize, whereby we are offering from primary school to the university, because the one thing we campaigned under is that education must be accessible to all. As a result, in the next few days, we will be hosting what we call a scholarship award ceremony. With that said, I want to invite every resident of Belmopan to honor August 1st as Belmopan Day, under the theme "Reevaluating the Past, Re-Engineering the Future." And on that same day, it is also Emancipation Day, and that is an event that we will also be celebrating in the afternoon. With that said, happy, happy Belmopan Day! And remember, memorize the theme "Reevaluating the Past, Re-Engineering the Future." Thank you! Muchas gracias! Seremé! Thank you, muchas gracias, seremos!
My fellow residents of Belmopan, today is a day of celebration. Belmopan is 51 years old, and birthdays are always cause for celebration. Belmopan has always been a community that looks out for one another. We have always been our borders keeper. As we confront the challenges that affect us every day, let us be reminded of our role in fulfilling the vision of our founder and great POP leader, the right honourable George Cadel Price. Our national hero had a vision of Belize becoming a great nation, and its capital Belmopan becoming a shining example of a jewel city, radiating light and love, peace and joy, of a prosperous garden city that fulfills its great potential. As your representative, along with our energetic mayor and caring POP councillors, we understand the challenges you are going through. We know the fear you experience. We know you want to take back your city and make it a kinder, gentler place, a safe, vibrant, beautiful capital that you and your family deserve and can enjoy. This is our time to do so. We have consulted you, and you have told us what Belmopan needs and wants, and even how to go about fulfilling these needs: from infrastructure to public safety, attracting investment to providing jobs, keeping the city clean and wholesome, incorporating our outlying communities into the life and work of the city, creating parks and playgrounds for young people to enjoy, partnering with the public offices, the embassies, the university, the business community, the elderly, retired pioneers, while giving needed attention to our young people. All these concerns and our plans to address them are reflected in our plans for a better Belmopan. Our infrastructure plans are now in full swing. In only eight months, we have graded and added new material to over 50 streets in Belmopan. The San Martin Road has been paved, bringing much-needed relief from dust and potholes. Our scholarship program in partnership with the mayor of Belmopan will be announced shortly, and plans for our gardening program are in its final stage. All along, we have been feeding our most vulnerable and needy. Our ambitious housing program to build over 500 houses in Belmopan will be formally announced in the coming weeks. All we needed was honest, hard-working, creative leadership. There is no excuse not to achieve all that we have planned. The future looks bright. Belmopan is in good hands. With your support, in March of this year, we elected a qualified, full-time mayor whose priority is to take Belmopan to the next level into the 21st century, with all the attributes expected of the capital of this great nation. We will work tirelessly every day to make this happen. But Belmopan needs you to help us achieve our goals. I invite you to believe in Belmopan. Believe that Belmopan can be made whole again with young, bright, dedicated leadership from the party that created Belmopan and brought independence to our beloved country. Let us all remember that we are still battling the pandemic of COVID-19. In much bigger and much more prosperous countries, their current third wave has been deadlier. Our greatest tool to combat the disease is still the vaccine. It is still the only weapon we have to fight this war we are engaged in. Let us continue being our borders keeper and respect and follow the protocols that the Ministry of Health and Wellness has issued. Let us set an example for the rest of our country to follow and get vaccinated. Thank you for your confidence in Belmopan. Thank you for believing in its present potential and its future greatness. I invite you to pray for our beloved city and to add action to our prayers. On this special anniversary and these trying and challenging times, what matters most is that we all love, support, and embrace our community. Your future and the future for our families are at stake.